Nice. Lisa Buck, myself Phil Ruck, we've got Michael Costello, John Beckett, Bob Bear and Krista Switzer on the end. Uh, next up, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Very good. We have a second. Thank you. Any uh comments? Edits? Hearing none. What are we just doing hands? Very good. All those in favor?
That's seven approved, none opposed.
Very good. Uh, next up approval of the minutes of August twenty first, twenty twenty four. I could not be at that meeting, so I will not be voting, but are there any edits to the me- uh, the meeting minutes?
We all look to our right.
Yeah. Krista is always a designated.
Second page, Chris probably found something under traffic access and parking.
Okay.
Not chances changes. It's on, yes. On page two, traffic access and parking, chances to existing vehicles should be changes, I think.
Okay.
Spell check at its worst.
Other comments?
Okay, um, also under traffic access and parking. Uh, on the line that starts or Park Street or from other private roads, scratch the o- other because the two that preceded are not private roads.
Yep, good catch. Other comments? All right, motion second. Couple edits.
Phil, I don't think you took a motion for the minutes, not one that I caught anyway.
Okay.
I move that we accept the minutes with the changes brought forth.
Very good. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any?
That's seven in favor, none opposed.
Vote, so never mind me. Uh, next up, new business. We have two public hearings this evening. First up, a public hearing for a shoreline permit application by Versant Power to complete infrastructure improvements to the Orno substation located off of Broadway, including expanding the existing gravel yard area, placing fill in sloped areas to create level ground and creating a new twenty foot wide access drive at eighteen Broadway, tax map twenty eight dash one lot sixty three in the MDR in limited residential shoreline zoning district. Could I have a a representative come up? And what we typically do is uh our planner Isabel has prepared a summary of these applications, but we'd like somebody to be available for for questions after her presentation.
Okay. Um, so as was mentioned, this is a shoreline permit specifically, and I want to mention that because this is a little bit different in terms of the standards that you would typically review applications on. So we're all generally familiar with site plan review standards and our subdivision standards. We don't see shoreline permits only as often, so you frequently see these standards with other applications. But this one's sort of a weird one where it only applies to the shoreline permit standards. So just so you're aware. As was mentioned, the applicant is Versant Power, um, and they are completing infrastructure improvements um at their existing substation, um, including expanding the existing gravel yard area, placing fill in sloped areas to create level ground and then also creating a new twenty foot wide access drive from from Broadway. Um, again, this is in front of you because this is uh almost the entirely of this entirety of this site, the whole green area that you're seeing on the screen is within the limited residential shoreline overlay area. So what you're seeing on screen now is sort of a zoomed out version of the proposed plan. So this here is the new um uh, access drive. This essentially follows an existing cart path uh that was sort of already there from Broadway. Um, and then this would be the the expanded gravel area. So in terms of the unique issues that the planning board has indicated they want to hear about, with regard to drainage, stormwater and erosion control, the proposed subs- substation expansion and the new gravel access drive have been designed to maintain the existing drainage patterns and grades similar to the existing substation, to the extent practical. Some strategic interventions were proposed, including um, again, locating that proposed gravel access drive along an existing cart path off of Broadway, thus minimizing grading and disruptions to the existing drainage patterns. And then they're also pro- uh proposing to remove an existing culvert west of the proposed access road. The culvert uh to be removed currently conveys water out of an adjacent depression. The removal of this and the reconfiguration of the depression will end up allowing water to drain over the road where it will then drain into a proposed swale along the side of the access road. Uh, this is more similar to existing conditions, and this has been reviewed by the town's engineering peer reviewer with no concerns raised regarding the uh stormwater management provisions being proposed. And then with regard to erosion control, um, they are proposing a variety of best management practices. These are shown on the site grading plan, and the town's environmental services manager has reviewed the proposed erosion control measures and has found them to be uh more than appropriate. With regard to trees, natural resources and wildlife habitat, the Penobscot River, so adjacent to this property, is a documented home to brook floater whose primary threat is related to impacts to water quality. That's a kind of muscle species for those who are unaware. Um, it's related to impacts to water quality due to increases in direct and indirect pollution. But since the project is proposing the um erosion control BMPs during construction to protect the adjacent areas and the Penobscot River from any potential excess sedimentation, eroded material or runoff impacts to any significant wildlife habitat are not anticipated as a result of this application. Um, tree clearing work is proposed. Uh, it's anticipated to consist largely of just de-limming existing trees. The removal of trees uh will only be in necessary areas. The standards here are um that you can't remove trees greater than four inches diameter at breast height or above um over a forty percent threshold. So rough calculations that the applicants did using aerial imagery imagery of the site anticipate that tree clearing for this project would end up only covering an area of about nine hundred and eighty-five square feet. So uh, the overall site is five acres within the shoreline zone, so not nearly hitting that forty percent mark. Thus, the standard there has been met. And with regard to historic and archaeological resources, I just wanted to bring up um for your attention more than anything. So um, there's one portion of the site, uh, it's it's about where my cursor is right now, uh, that intersects a half kilometer of a known historic uh archaeological site. This map is from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office. And so because of that, that triggered the applicant to reach out to the Historic Preservation Commission on uh July twenty ninth. The requirement in the ordinance for this section is uh that they need to reach out to them at least twenty days in advance, so more than enough time to get back to them. And we did receive uh just recently a um no- an official determination from the Historic Preservation Commission that there's no affected historic resources. Um, so just wanted to flag that for your attention because it wouldn't have been included in your meeting packet.
I was going to ask that.
Um, there are no requested waivers, but a plumbing permit has of course been determined to be not applicable to this application, given that there's no plumbing or um such utilities on site. We are recommending a number of conditions. The first far four are our standard conditions. So of course, the approval is dependent on the plans within the application. Any changes have to return to the planning board. Uh, they are required to obtain a fill permit from the code enforcement officer, and that's uh, in accordance with our excavation and fill permit uh, bill performance standards rather. As mentioned, there's a standard condition around erosion control measures that will be installed and maintained according to the main DEP's uh best management practices manual. There's just a note for them around noise and that the applicants and their contractors are well advised to familiarize themselves with that section of the town's ordinances. And then just for your note, under shoreline uh permit standards, the permits expire one year from the date of issuance if a substantial start is not made in construction. Um if a substantial start is made, the applicant also has one additional year to complete the project. Otherwise, they would need to return to the town to get an updated permit. So just flagging that more for their attention. And otherwise, um, staff is recommending approval of this project, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Very good. Uh, before we open up to public hearing, I'll limit discussion for the board. I I just have a couple of questions. I wonder if you could walk us just through the the drawing, uh, just talk about the the drainage issues that Isabel described. She just talked about it, but if you could walk us through, I saw where the culvert's going to be removed, but I just want to understand that a little bit better, if you can show us. Do you want to take this then? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Just a second. Is your mic on?
Is there a little green light?
Little, little green button.
Nope. Now it must be.
Thanks much.
There's a green light now, sorry.
Did you repeat everything?
No. I could try. I, so, yeah, I mean, that's kind of the summary. There's, there's no um kind of what's the word I want to use? There's no stormwater infrastr- infrastructure proposed, no detention basins, no infiltration basins.
I can see a swell because they took out the culvert and just put in a swale on the opposite side, but I just wanted the board to
Yep, that's the direction they want it to go in.
I don't know, can can you use your cursor to highlight the culvert that's to be removed and where that drainage is? Just so they know.
Yeah, so
Yeah.
Approximately this area here is that new
Yeah.
swell.
So the road, you know, took the place of some vegetation. They just have some minor upgrades, but not anything significant as far as runoff. It appears from this project. So it appears that they've addressed that. And you said Mandy reviewed. Good.
Yes.
What's, what's the timing of the project?
Um, if everything goes well, they'd like to start construction in October, is my understanding, and it's about a year long construction period. Is that about right? Six months, oh, for sure.
I'm just curious, when I was looking at this application, is this well, hopefully, going to improve Orno's capabilities and I guess whether resiliency is the right word. But Orno has uh long had a lot of problems with uh power outages and such. Is this designed to help uh with that situation, just out of curiosity?
It 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 definitely is. It's it's to increase and improve reliability, but that's where I should probably turn it over to Jeff, who was knows a lot more about the electrical. Well, I'll, I'll give you a short answer and then you can elaborate on it, but that's the 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 yard's being expanded to add a transformer and um other electrical equipment that I honestly don't quite understand, but it's to increase capacity and to improve reliability. So yes, I can't speak to whether it's going to affect how, you know, reduce the number of outages, but that is the purpose of the project to in- okay, improve reliability of the grid.
That would be a positive.
Yeah, that is the whole point.
Yeah. Do you want to expand on that at all? Is it, it's a fair size increase? I mean, it's a big lot, but I just.
Yeah, there's two parts to the, to the expansion. Those that are familiar with the substation is two, there's.
Uh, just for the record, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I am Jeff and I'm a contractor to Versant. Power engineer, et cetera, et cetera. Anything you need to know, ask and I'll try to answer that. Um, the, the yard presently has um a bunch of steel there which dates back hundred years, put in there to accommodate the hydro project, which is down there, which used to be part of Anglo Hydro, et cetera, et cetera, going back in time. Um, it also fed local load out of there. Over time, uh, forty-six KV lime is brought up from down VZ way up through and a step-down transformer is put in to allow sourcing a distribution load, again, improving uh reliability. That was back in the probably late eighties that that occurred. Um, what we're doing at this point, if we're taking that transformer out, uh, replacing it with a larger transformer for a couple of reasons. One is the age and the vintage of the old one. Uh, and the other was really needed a larger one, load's growing in the area and there's some, I believe, some some generation solar or something that's coming on that needed some additional capacity over what was there. So there, there's a number of things going on, but we're also doing uh is is we're putting some steel around the, where the transformer is on the forty-six KV side of it, which will allow the the breaker to be installed i- in a more permanent manner. The the facility's down there right now, when they were stuck in, they were stuck in because there was an immediate need and they were put on wood crib, et cetera. It was a, a temporary scenario. We're all familiar with temporary. We're in the process of trying to make it permanent. Uh, making it permanent is is a more reliable facility, uh, more long-lived facility. But also what we're doing with the steel as it goes in, we've got bays for two other breakers. The line that comes in right now basically goes by and there's a little tap that comes off it that feeds this transformer. That tap then has a breaker which is protecting the transformer and tripping that to try to uh, protect it as well as leave the line going. The way it's designed is that in the future, additional breakers can go in so that if a segment of the line has a fault on it, only that segment will go out and the town will go out. This is where the reliability improvement comes, so there'd be dual feeds into it. That's not part of this. This is a stepping stone in that direction. So that's uh, you know, don't, don't say, oh, we've got this wonderful thing. It, this is this is being done to accommodate the transformer, but we're also trying to use a little bit of foresight and and building something that's going to have the ability to uh, improve reliability better a- as we go, go forth. Sorry, sorry if I stumbled on that a little bit. If you got questions, I'll see what I can do to answer them.
That, that's what I was interested in. Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Uh, just a suggestion. So for a, you know, if, if we go that route for approving this, I was just thinking, given that it is in the shoreline zone and the emphasis we put on that, I thought it might be a good suggestion. So I'm looking at, you, you show a bunch of grading close to the floodplain, you know, you've got the, the riprap, side slope and all that. I see there's a double row of silt fence along that whole side that's supposed to protect uh water resources, but I thought it might be a good idea. Uh, Isabel to and the board to include that town staff or environmental services manager who did review erosion control uh for this project. Uh, and perhaps the code enforcement be present for a, like a pre you know, pre-construction meeting on site, and I know we might have some standard language, but I thought given the shoreline zone and where the, you know, where this is located, that that, that might be a good idea, just to make sure everything's in place. Also, the, the cutting discussion. Just make sure, because I was just talking about the four-inch trees, but just, just make sure it's clear uh where the contractor can operate. Make sure all that stuff's in place and our water bodies are protected before shovels hit the ground.
It would be typical that we would require um a pre-construction meeting for projects like this anyway, but I we, I think we can add a condition to that effect. It would just be standard practice, but.
Yeah, I know we've talked about that before. I think it came up a while back, and I don't remember the exact instance, but I just want to make sure that that is occurring, whether that's condition of approval or whether it's standard issue. I just, you know, with, with Megan, our
Yeah.
town environmental person and code there.
Yeah.
So either way, just a thought. All right, I did not have any other questions. Anybody else before I open it up? All right, you know, open up the public hearing, invite anybody that stepped up to the mic and uh tell us who you are and, you know, what your concerns are. If you could, yep, step right up. Please.
And just make sure that the green light is on before you start speaking for us.
So I'm Sean Anis and I live on twenty-nine Water Street, and I don't necessarily have, well, I have some questions. Um, so uh, right now there is a, what looks like a sewer lid. I don't know the terms, just to the left or north of the road right now. Is that part of the sewer line or something like that? Is that going to survive or I just don't know how that would move.
There, there, there's a sewer main that comes parallel to the road.
Could you?
Is that Water Street?
Flash that up perhaps?
Yeah.
So, so there's a sewer main that comes. Wait till we get it back up there.
Do you want the plan or the map?
Uh, the plan that's going to show the sewer manhole that she was talking about.
You had up, I think, shows it all.
Yeah, I can see it on these.
So the um slide the whole thing down to the lower right a little bit, the other way.
So there's another plan. I'm looking the zoomed in version, I think, has the sewer manhole that I think that she was referring to. Yeah. Yeah, so right there, that
Okay.
leader that's kind of.
You, you can see um, you know, it looks like a quarter inch wide line. If you want to run your cursor over that, Isabel, it runs uh parallel to Water Street and then it cuts back toward Water Street. That's a sewer main, and there's actually two manholes. You'll see if you go down there. One is over near the existing substation and, and another one is uh just beyond where the road is. So we've been in touch with the uh city sewer department. We've gotten them down there. We've walked the site with them. We've got their plans. We've got uh, the best information we can on that to, to include it in our plans. And obviously, we're doing anything we can to avoid any impacts to that. So there's not just the manholes, but there's a sewer main that was been a problem. And in fact, that's what created basically the reason we're here today. Uh, we had a yard laid out which looked like it was going to be okay without cutting trees, without going toward the wetland or, or the, the, oh, the river any closer, without having to fill, do adding fill. And uh, but that had us crossing the sewer main, basically sewer main was inside the substation. Uh, the ci- the city sewer didn't seem to have a concern with that. We were more concerned with it than they were, and we rotated things. Uh, skinnied them up and did some other things, tried to minimize any impact to, to shoreline as well as, you know, filling, et cetera. Uh, we finally determined that that we, we're going to have to fill. A- and as such, we, we've done it. You see the new contours and the old, but that was driven by that sewer main and the need to rotate things away from that, so there wasn't any impact to that.
So where the wood road right now is running it's running south of that, so the real road is going to run north of that sewer main, right?
Right. Well, the, the fill is more, more, uh, you see on the top of the drawing where the lines get real close. That, that's primarily where the fill is. Uh, there's a little bit to, to the, you know, to the right of that as well, but not much. Most of it's in that area where where uh you've got the close contour lines. Um, the area back where the driveway is, there's some fills that go in there, but it's not really a lot of fill. It's more taking the path and making it broader so you can drive in and out of it.
Okay, that kind of leads to my second question.
Could you?
I haven't made use of it.
I apologize. Could you step up to the mic? We rec- we record all these proceedings.
So my second question is, uh, right now there is a portage path um, to the left or north of the current transformer station. And I do know a lot of people uh ride those rapids between their one end to the other. Is that, is there going to be access to that or not? Pardon me?
The, the present canoe access, which um, I'm not sure if it shows in this plan, but if it did, it'd be
The older part, yeah.
Excuse me?
From the older part of the facility, right?
Closer to the Right, well, it's, it's, it's there. It's, it's existing.
Yeah.
A- and it, it's not being impacted. We, we made sure as we designed it that we stayed out of that. And as been noted, there's a footpath of some sort that's going down where the driveway is right now, or we're planning to put the driveway. That footpath is still accessible. It's not going to be gated, fenced, and utilization of that, I don't see that changing.
A lot of people in the spring use that. Um, and the last comment I have is I was uh living in my house when the sluice way went in, and I could, maybe it was the subcontractors, but some of them started at six thirty on Saturday and Sunday mornings. So can you please make sure that doesn't happen? And believe me, I know it was six thirty because I looked, so I'm just hoping you can avoid that. And is there any noise that's going to be new noise that's going to come out of this station? Right now, the transformer farmers don't hear anything.
The, the, the new transformer um shouldn't be any different sound-wise than the existing one. With that said, we don't know until it actually gets on site. But we, we spec those out to be relatively low noise and um hopefully that's going to be true. But all, all I can say is, you know, how, how we, how we design that and we'll, we'll see what reality is when it gets here.
Okay.
It's larger, but it's um effectively the same.
Okay. So Isabel can add to this, but we do have a standard condition in answer to your question, so that is one of the conditions of approval. Saying all noise associated with the proposed development, including noise during and after construction. Uh, shall be regulated in accordance with the provisions of chapter thirteen, article two, noise control. Applicants and their contractors are well advised to familiarize themselves with that section of the town's ordinance. So that's a condition of approval, standard condition, and uh, I'm not sure that
So it's
I mean, that should limit their hours of
It does. So our ordinance is between seven and seven, and we no longer allow construction on weekends. So seven and seven weekdays, and there's noise decibel levels once it's in operation, if that's ever a concern.
Okay, because what the problem with the sluice way going in is that at the generator station, uh, there was a fan that was there as present to cool the station. But the vents for that fan were leading towards Water Street and Broadway. And it was producing a less than than the decibel limit noise, but a high pitch all the time. So with uh, I did ask the town and everything else, and they couldn't do anything, and the, and the police also checked, but the hydro people were very kind and moved the vent to the other side of the building. So now this noise is going out to the river and doesn't make any noise. So that's just why I have a history of worrying about past noises, because even with my storm windows down, I could still, it was still bothering me in the house, so. Um, but doesn't sound like it'll be a problem with this one.
Just out of curiosity, for a project like this, is there any need for a a buffering or additional screening, anything like that, that might also help knock down the noise? I'm just wondering, given her comment, because uh, Jeff's answer to that wasn't necessarily conclusive that there isn't noise, but what we've done with several projects uh to buffer neighbors is to discuss screening or buffering, something like that, which has potential for noise dissipation, so.
So there wouldn't be anything specifically required by, by the ordinance standards for this one?
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, you've heard the concern from, from the butter. So given that the hydro has been receptive to comments in the past, uh, Versant, I would, I'm, I am hoping that uh should there be any issues with the, the new equipment, that, that you might consider those kinds of things. It's not a ordinance requirement at this point, but when you put utilities by existing neighborhoods, there's, I mean, we just had a project with a natural gas substation where the old uh service station is on the corner of uh park and Service station is on the corner of uh Park and College Ave and. No, it's, it's a utility beside a neighborhood, so we do take that seriously, so keep that in mind, that if there are noise issues that. Uh, you have neighbors. Yep, I appreciate that. All right, any other comments from the public? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Limit further discussion from the board, I think we had some, some good discussion, uh. Oh, just quickly gated access, it appears that. The driveway going in, because I, you know, I've been down there too with a, you know, the. Portage and, and around that site, go fishing down that, that way, but uh. I know that there's current chain link fence around the existing substation. But I just want to make sure that all of this equipment, there's gates on both sides to where you've expanded, correct? Limit access, so people aren't going to be wandering in there, yep. Good. That's all I had. All right, any other comments?
Pretty much covered it all.
All right, so typically our process, we do have proposed findings of fact that have been prepared. Uh, describing that, uh, all the issues we've discussed this evening. Uh, wh- what we do rather than read these in the record, they're available for review. But we make these part of uh any, any motion that we have for approving a project, so that's how we've. Kind of tried to streamline our process up here, saves me a lot of reading too.
And I just have one thing to flag, um, so we talked about, well, I talked about in my overview that. We did after the packets went out, receive a no affected historic resources uh determination from the state. We received that and it has been uploaded to the website, it was not here in time before your packets were mailed out. I do want to note that we should update um. The last finding here, just to note that that was uh provided and that none will be impacted.
Yeah, because I was going to ask that question, because I saw that they hadn't heard from the MHPC at the time, but. That's been addressed, so please note in the, I guess, in any motion. When we go there, uh, that. That that has been received.
The archaeological side then.
Yes, that would be eleven.
Yeah, last one. All right, I think we're ready for a motion, if, if somebody wants to take care of that, please. Wants it.
Give it a stab if you're ready.
All right.
I move to approve the shoreline permit application of Versant Power dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And revised through August thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four to complete the infrastructure improvements. To the Ohio, uh, I'm sorry, the Orno Substation located off Broadway, where the findings of facts and conditions. Up approval included in the meeting, meeting packet. As were just mentioned, dated September eighteen, twenty-twenty-four. There are four standard and one unique. Uh, standard conditions uh presented in the finding of the facts. And one other that was included was uh a pre-construction meeting. And then the addition that you just mentioned about the archaeological facts.
That the findings of fact that were prepared ahead of time have now been amended because they received. That number eleven, the archaeological.
Had, had no impact on them.
Correct, yeah, so that documentation was received, so the town has that now. That good?
Awesome.
All right, I think that covers it, uh, thank you, Michael.
Excuse me, are we going to require some kind of a buffer for the neighbors or are we not going to do that?
Not at this time, right now, as we left it, there's no ordinance requirement. And there's not necessarily. Listening to the towns or the, the applicant's engineer, uh, that there's not any. Certainty that the noise is going to be louder than there is currently, so. I guess basically I just asked for an understanding from the applicant that should things uh differ, that. That they be good neighbors. And they acknowledge that. I'm okay with that. Is everyone else okay with that? You, you have a comment, yeah?
No, I'm okay with that, I.
Yeah.
Feel comfortable with the response.
Others is.
By me.
What do you think, Krista? Yeah, Krista, do you think that, that's okay?
It sounds like it's, we don't have much choice.
Okay, Lisa. Ashley. All right, so we have a motion, thank you, Michael.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Very good. All right, next up, we have another public hearing, uh, this is for a minor subdivision application by M and M Truck Sales Incorporated. To amend the Riverside Estate subdivision plan in order to create three additional lots with frontage on. Union Street Tax Map thirty-one dash two, lot one dash nine, or is that lots one through nine or lot one dash nine?
It's block one dash nine.
Lot one dash nine in the MDR zoning district. And I have a representative of, from the. Applicant, come up and. Be ready for questions. Do we have anybody here?
I don't believe so, we don't have any attendees online.
That's, you know, we, we've done this in the case of the Forest Hollow. Because of that, that was just so uh routine. But for a subdivision, we typically have a representation.
Yeah.
At a meeting. Were you given any notice that they would not be here?
I was not, I, the last I heard someone was planning to attend, the representative.
All right, I, in my opinion, I, I'm not personally that comfortable with going ahead with an application if. With a subdivision application, granted, this is relatively simple, but. We normally have representation, the Forest Hollow was the, I think, one of the only ones that I can recall, when he would just. Take a lot, combine them, then separate them. You know, then combine them, then separate them, we've been through that so many times that there weren't really any issues. This is. A little, little different, it's not a really complicated one, but uh. Normally, we, we have people here, I, I'm going to ask. Everybody's opinion, I, I have mine, but uh I'd, I'd like to hear your thoughts. Ashley, what do you think? Lisa?
Table it.
Table it.
Uh, table it, uh, in the interest of uh public opinion.
I agree, uh, John?
Table it for the same reason, you know, it needs to be postponed.
Yep, Krista, what do you think?
I didn't quite hear what you said.
Okay. Nor, we don't, there's no applicant representative here this evening to answer questions, to address. Any potential issues, and this is more, this is more. I guess, serious, more involved than the Forest Hollow ones where. That applicant would never show, it, it was a routine, we just went through that time and time again. This time is a subdivision, three-lot subdivision. Uh, dividing new lots and I, I see neighbors here and there's no applicant. I, I don't think we should proceed this evening. So I was asking your, your opinion.
I'm good with that, I had a um. Question about this one, and that is. From the materials that I got, we were just going ahead with the three lots. But I thought that they had, I was under the impression that they also wanted to. Um, have the reserved land specified where the, you know, we approved that once before, but they didn't. File, so it was.
Right, the way I, I looked at this plan, it just looked like they carved a chunk off. Divided, subdivided three lots, then they still have a whole nother retained portion that at some time or other. Might come before us. What this project, what we review is these three lots and then the proposal for the retained land. But that, that's what's in front of us and it's a subdivision, and typically we have an applicant. Ready to discuss issues, and I see people from the public, yes.
So i- if we postpone this, uh, whose job is it to make contact with the applicant or?
Town staff, yeah. All right, so it sounds like uh we're all in favor of tabling this, Isabel, do you have any recommendations?
So I just want to clarify for the benefit of the members of the public present. Would you be tabling this uh up to our next meeting, which would be October sixteenth?
I think in fairness to the applicant, that's, we'll just go to the next meeting.
So just for the benefit of those present, this would be first on the agenda for the October sixteenth meeting. And I apologize that the folks are not here. They, we're all aware, so.
I'm telling you, so. Uh, yeah, I, I, normally we have an applicant here, I, I don't want to proceed because you folks are going to ask questions and we might not. Not get a, an answer, so that, that's our option here, I wanted to confirm with the rest of the. Planning board members that we're going to push this off. Thanks for coming over, uh, I don't know what to tell you, but uh we're going to pick it up. In October and see where we go then, but uh you'll receive notice similar to what you did. As a butters and we'll, we'll go from there. Thanks, folks. All right, do we need, we need to make a motion and?
I would make a formal motion to table.
Well, anybody, formal motion, please?
I move in the absence of a. Applicant being present for the meeting in the interest of the public who is here to question that applicant, we move. Uh, we table this. Presentation until the next meeting in October.
Yeah.
And was that October tenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen, October sixteenth.
Yeah, that works, thank you, Michael, uh, second?
Second.
Forget any further discussion? All those in favor? Very good. All right, next up, uh, old business, there is none, uh. Well, we know what we have on tap for October, anything else that we're looking at, Isabel, for the town planner report?
Um, I have a number of projects on my desk right now that are awaiting completeness determination, um, hoping that they'll be available for October, but. Expect them soon, um, I don't have anything else in terms of planning board projects, but I do want to give a plug both to. Planning board members, but also to anyone from the public that might be watching online or watching this uh as a YouTube video following up. Uh, we do have a online survey out for our comprehensive plan, it will take about ten minutes to complete. Ask a variety of questions um that will help inform a vision statement and a future vision for the town's. Uh, growth, development, um, investment in public services and all of the above. It is available on our um town website uh on the homepage, but is also available at. Bit dot L Y slash Orno Comp, C O M P Plan, P L A N. Orno Comp Plan.
Very good, thank you. And so projects, we'll wait and see, but we know we have at least one coming up.
Should we retain these?
Um, I would retain uh their, your items, we will, we can provide them next month, but it will likely be the same material.
Good. All right, thank you, Isabel, uh, last up adjournment, can I have a motion? Ooh, wow, people are quick. Second?
Second.
All right, there we go, thanks, all those in favor? See you in October.